All right, Susan says we are ready, so welcome to those who are joining us this evening here. Council members. Mr. Call or you can watch if anyone joins us online.
Yep.
Let us know if any hands are raised. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. We'll begin our meeting tonight by asking Councilmember Extron. If she has an implication or a thought, then we listen to the question.
Absolutely, I would give an indication. Dear Heavenly Father, we are so very grateful to be gathered here together as members of a beautiful community. We are so grateful for the opportunity that we have to live and serve and work with one another. We're grateful for the outpouring of thy Spirit that we have received. We're grateful for the precipitation and we're grateful that we have had minimal flooding and that we've been able to be able to handle it well. We thank thee for the inspiration that thou hast given us and pray for more of it. Please bless us to have open eyes, open hearts, and be able to listen and care for one another. Please help us as we make decisions regarding our city, that we may be able to do so in wisdom and order. We're again so grateful for all that thou hast given us and we ask these things hopefully with any other associates during the meeting, we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Extron. Before we begin the meeting this evening, I would like to identify our voting order tonight. Require a roll call vote. To start this evening with Councilmember Severing. Left, we'll go to Councilmember Dowpas. So make our way down here and then, of course, we hear from Councilwoman Extron at the end. All right. So this evening we do have a presentation by Mr. Reed Miller. He's been allocated 10 minutes. So just, so there's no surprise if it goes on within 10 minutes, I will air it up. I want me to say that this is a bit unusual. Mr. Miller asked for time prior to filing his candidate for city council. I just want to make sure that we are aware that this is something that we will not be asking council members to utilize presentations as part of our city council meeting. So tonight, Mr. Miller representing as a non-candidate, although he filed, wanted to bring that to our attention, that presentations here at the council meeting are not for political purposes. So, Mr. Miller, if you would see.
Thank you very much. Those who have come with regard to this topic, election integrity, please rise, let them know. Thank you. There are quite a few here that are very interested in election integrity. In my short presentation today, I will first define election integrity and explain the importance of the voting system as one of our basic rights. Secondly, I will review handouts that show how we can maximize election integrity. Third, I will show what has happened in Utah, where plans, schemes, and methods are being used to hinder, manipulate, and destroy total election integrity. Finally, I will tell you how we, as lower magistrates, have the power and means to control our own local municipal elections, where we can make election integrity supreme. One of our most important and cherished rights is the right to vote. If we lose our election integrity, then we lose our republic. That is the voice of the people. Therefore, we need a system of maximum election integrity. Now, elect integrity means free from fraud, free from manipulation, free from corruption. The election process is a battle between those who want to fundamentally transform America from being a sovereign nation versus those who want to preserve all that is noble, true, excellent, and praiseworthy about America. Hopefully, all of us here will take the side to preserve our sovereignty. Sovereignty means that we control our own governing decisions without outside forces dictating what we must do. Think of it, our sovereignty from Great Britain was what the War of the Independence was all about. Now, I wish I had time to go over these these handouts in detail, but you'll have to just go over them yourself. So I hope that you will be able to do that, okay? Now, the four are election integrity, seven reasons to eliminate voting machine, and count ballots by hand. The other one is 10 reasons to end vote by mail. It's important to remember that restoring election integrity can be accomplished right here at the local level. We don't have to depend on the county or on the state for our elections. In fact, as we go over things, we will realize that it costs a lot of money for the election ballots and the other things. I heard up to $60,000 we've contracted out. And with the postage stamp at increasing to 66 cents, you know, 1st of July, that's quite an expense. If we were to conduct our local elections here, I'm confident, in fact, I know that we could cut that amount in half, in half. Okay, I was an election judge when machines were first used to tabulate the votes. At that time, my wife saw a video where a person could manipulate the voting machine while not even being in the room where the machine was situated. This was suspicious to me. I said to myself, voting machines might open the door to a greater possibility for fraud and corruption. Now, with making the ballots in a booth, dropping the ballots in the precinct box, then having two or more election judges counting the ballots by hand, hey, that's very secure and safe way. Mind, we are talking about maximum election integrity. I learned that there was an annual cybersecurity event held in Las Vegas called the Voting Machine Hacking Village. Onlookers watched hackers break into voting machines that we now rely on for elections. It took the hackers less than two hours to manipulate the machine. By the end of the three-day event, they had hacked every machine as well as the electronic poll book, which was listed, which listed all the registered voters by precinct. One of the voting villager organizers, Harry Hurstey, who is a computer programmer and an election technology expert, stated this. "We know that every single machine in this room can be hacked, and every future machine can be hacked." In addition, Hurstey warned, "If we don't get our act together quickly, this could be one of the biggest threats to American democracy in our history." I decided that if all voting machines could be hacked and manipulated, then the use of voting machines might not be the way to achieve maximum election integrity. Okay? Now, the other thing is mail-in ballots. Another concern when we pinpoint an effort to maximize our election integrity is on the mail-in ballot procedure. And before mail-in ballot systems took over, dead people didn't vote in elections. Ballots from addresses that were vacant lots never were counted. Before mail-in ballots, people never had the chance of marking ballots from a spouse or from children, where the ballot was open and just open to be laid on, and laid on the kitchen table. Nor could people mark ballots of people who moved away, nor marked ballots of the elderly living in assisted living places. Before mail-in ballots, there were no ballots that were thicker than normal. There in Arizona, they had those. And so those who were, who had a different sized ballots, had the machines plugged in, they had to go to a centralized place and wait a couple hours. Of course, this could never happen in Utah, right? Wrong. Hey, before the mail-in ballots, my daughter could not receive two ballots, like she did this last election. What I'm getting at is this. Mail-in ballots and also the machines have a great possibility for fraud and manipulation. We want maximum election integrity. Now, there's another thing that I want to tell about the Utah story. In order to understand a little better what is happening today in Utah concerning the election process, let's go back to 2015, when Utah's election story had alternative events. Now, please look at that last handout, Utah Internet Voting Advisory Committee. The purpose of this gathering was to study the potential benefits and challenges of implementing not a mail-in ballot system, but in the internet voting system in Utah. Please note the members on the committee, Lieutenant Governor Spencer Cox, who's now the governor. We have also many of the mail-in ballot promoters today who are on the committee, such as Ricky Hatch, who is still a Weber County Clerk and Auditor. Ryan Calley, who is Weber County Election Supervisor, who is now the election, Chief Election Officer for the state. Note the pros and the cons on that handout, okay? Note the cons. There are a whole bunch of them. Internet voting might confirm, might not conform with existing laws. Voting accuracy and privacy could be effective. Possible hackers, both foreign and domestic, could decide election income, outcomes. There might be problems with browsers and operating systems. Now, there are a few others here. In the following report issued, in the final report that was issued the 21st of August 2015, in spite of all the serious security issues and numerous unavoidable flaws, the committee decided to proceed with plans to eventually adopt, not scrap, the insecure internet voting system. And some of the intermediate steps needed for this intermediate internet voting to come about was to create the following through a total vote-by-mail system, to establish voter IDs after the voting equipment, alter the voting equipment certification process, and then run a pilot program with military voters and disabled voters with the internet voting system. Wow. I'll tell you, as I see it, the Internet Voting Advisory Board.
Reed, your 10 minutes are up.
Okay, let me, let me just finish with the conclusion, can I?
You have 37 seconds.
Okay. What I have, what I want to know is that we here can do our own elections. I have the expertise, I've been in the election and voting system for decades. I know every step that needs to be made. I am willing to donate my time and my efforts to get this together so that we have maximum election integrity. Without that, we lose our republic, we lose our voice of people.
You're on the talking center agenda. Council, you have a chance to look at the meeting's agenda. In doing so, have you found anything you feel may be a conflict in our discussion for this evening? I'm not seeing anyone identified as a conflict, so we'll proceed to item number three. This is a motion seeking approval of the April 25th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. Do you have a motion?
May I approve the city council meeting from April 25th?
Motion by Councilmember Swanson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? On this, Councilmember Dowpas has a second. Seeing none, then I would seek a approval of the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Now move on to item number four. Susan, I think you will be leading this discussion regarding action to consider amending ordinance 2023-08.
I'm just going to pull that up. Pretty much, it's just kind of a cleanup item. As you can see, we kind of added, inserted someplace, there was kind of left the blank, the definitions too blank. I wanted to add the reserve for future definitions, the kind of the A in, the ones were just kind of off. And so it's just basically a cleanup item, pretty straightforward.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, you're saying there's no substantive change in the ordinance.
Correct, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Susan. Although this is not a substantive change, we will require a roll call vote on this item. So, can I get a motion to amend ordinance 2023-08 as outlined by Susan?
Yes.
This Councilmember Barker.
Motion we approve, approve of amending ordinance 2023-08 as outlined.
All right, we have a motion to amend the ordinance. We have a second, Councilmember Barkers.
I second that.
I have a motion, a second to the motion by Councilmember Severing. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, then we'll proceed as outlined in our start of our meeting, we'll start with you, Councilmember Severing. Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Extron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Now enter into our active agenda. At this point in time, we will seek public comments for those who'd like to comment. You would step up to the podium and state your name, if you're a resident of North Ogden. And please say to me that you would have been interrupting anyone by limiting your comments to five minutes.
I'll be brief. Steph Casey, North Ogden resident. I just have to start by saying, thank you for allowing different perspectives to be shared by that presentation, I guess. I realized that he was put on the agenda before made, before he signed up to run. I still find that really odd and I'm uncomfortable with it. He's not wrong in maximum voting integrity, that it is important. That's why we've contracted the nationally recognized, award-winning Weber County Clerk Auditor's Office led by Ricky Hatch. I fully support Ricky Hatch and our voting system. And I'd like to just make that known. Thank you, Steph Casey.
Anyone else this evening who'd like to comment? That would be the sign, Doug?
Doug Anderson, for North Ogden. I received the email, Councilman Swanson, that there will not be any additional meetings regarding the committee. Totally with you there, in fact, I'm glad, I've had enough meetings. Um, what I would like is, if you would do us the courtesy of knowing that you have received our comments, if you would point out as you go through the budget that you're going to go through today, just let us know specifically which items you decided to adopt and quantitatively what the effect was. If you would let us know in that way how you received our recommendations. Thank you.
Evening, Russell Crook, Councilmember Barken. Uh, I just wanted to say a few brief words on Mr. Miller's speech. It sounds an awful lot like the grassroots effort that's going on nationwide right now to undermine our elections through Cleo Mitchell's efforts in, at the state level to form these electronic, electronic integrity, election integrity groups. And much of this material here, if you go and look up election integrity in Utah, you will find a lot of this stuff. It's scary, because when you think about grassroots, it sounds like it's something that's really good. You need activities together, but it's truly designed to undermine in-place tools to secure our elections. In particular, the Electronic Registration Information Center, ERIC, which is now under attack by the right. Utah is still a member, but it's under attack for, as recently pulled out.
Point of order, attack is an idea. No, we don't, we don't talk from the audience, please.
We respect people.
Sir, I understand, thank you. If you continue, I'll have to ask Congress to remove you.
Okay, I will rephrase, it's under threat. Oregon, Alabama, Louisiana, and Ohio have pulled out recently. This is a centralized database where states can share information about people who have died, moved from state to state, and they can find out whether or not there are duplicates, duplicate registrants. And look it up yourself, ERIC is a, is a very secure tool. So I just wanted to say that, Mr. Miller, I don't owe you, but I'll leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crook. That was the case of all this evening, we're glad you're enjoying this all. Feel free to step up to the podium and state your name if you're a resident of North Ogden.
I'm Charlie Kibble, and yes, I'm a resident of North Ogden. First, I don't think that Mr. Miller was in any way accusatory towards anyone. I think he was simply stating facts. For a note on my background, although I'm not the best computer programmer in the world, I have been an electrical engineer and a computer programmer for about 40 years now. With a decade break as a teacher in public schools. I can't talk about specifics for security reasons. And I'm not saying that just to try and gloss over, oh, I know better than anyone else, I don't. However, I can't count the number of secure computer systems that have been hacked by Russia, that have been hacked by China. And if anyone in this room thinks that anyone in the government in either China or Russia are friendly towards the United States, I would like to find out why. And in fact, any secure database can be hacked, because it is online. The very nature of it, being able to share between states, between organizations, makes it insecure. Now, how insecure is in question, that's up to, you know, people who are professionals. And I'm not a professional in computer security. I will make that statement right now. But I have read quite a bit about it and things that were once thought to be secure have been proven time and time again not to be secure. I think what Mr. Miller was trying to show, that really the only secure way, and I agree with this personally, for better or for worse, the only secure way to improve and establish and maintain election security is the way it has been done for 200 years. People in person, now, of course, we would need to have some exceptions for specifically people who can't get out. People in nursing facilities, for instance, or things like that. You know, but I'm sure that there are things that can be done to handle the exception. The rule, however, for people who are able to get out, who are able to get to a voting station, should be in person, show their identity, prove that they are a citizen of the precinct or of, or city or whatever that they're going to vote in, and then by hand filling out a ballot, which is then counted. If anyone watched the news in the last presidential election, I'm not saying, I'm not claiming there's any fraud. What I am saying is that because of the concerns of fraud in the contested states, elections were counted by hand anyway. So what's the point of having a computer system if they're going to be counted by hand anyway? I think I'm probably running out of time, so thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you for joining us this evening, and thank you for comments.
Hello, my name is Linda Sanchez. I am not a North Ogden City resident. However, I lived in the surrounding areas for much of my life and have, you know, like, come and hang out over here. And I feel like it's home. I want to tell you all thank you for what you do. Because we, the people, have elected you to do the things to help us, right? Because we don't have a voice by ourselves, we have a voice together, right? But we need you to stand up when there's times to stand up. And, Mr. Miller, I think he, he did show some things. Now, I think it was Ms. Casey. And whoever disagrees, I encourage you and anybody who doesn't believe that there is a problem, to come and do the hard work. Because guess what we needed?
Please, I'll mess with the audience, please.
We, we need help. Because I don't know if you guys know this, people go back and they actually check to see. That takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. You can allow to use a lot of manpower if people don't believe it. And with that being said, we were found on this country for freedom. And the best part is that we get to vote. Now, I'm going to tell you, I've been negligent, because I lived in this beautiful city up here. I never thought I needed to, because guess what, it's a beautiful city, nothing goes wrong, right? Well then, as time goes on, I realize there's a lot to be, a lot going on and a lot needs to be said and to be stood for. And yes, I do need to vote. So I've done my part in to do that. And then I, now I slightly become almost passionate about it. Because I didn't, when you are in a land of promise, right? I mean, we don't see a lot of bad things that we could, but we take a lot of things for granted. And I talk to people, hey, why aren't you voting, are you, you know? What doesn't matter? They do what they want to do anyway. Is that what we, the people, is that what our forefathers died for? Seriously? We need to know that our votes are being counted and that we're standing up, because guess what? All of our ancestors, they gave up everything. Can you imagine giving up everything just to say, let me go home? Let me stand up. Let me, not even for myself, I will die. For all my kids and my grandkids. Now, I know that we don't always agree that that's what this country is so amazing about, is that we come together and vote. And then our vote is what stands, right? But if it's not, if it's not done correctly, how can we stand by that? Especially when you go back and see that there's problems. Literally, voting is our only right, or is Literally, voting is our only right, or is not only our right, it's our power. When we vote, we take back our power to choose, to speak up, to speak out, and to stand with those that support we the people. That's part of our constitution, that's what you guys chose, did oath to uphold. To vote is so precious, it is the most, it is so powerful, and it's the nonviolent way that we the people have, and we need to use it. Not voting is not, is not a protest, it's a surrender. I vote because it's my right. It's my responsibility that I have now learned, I've been negligent. And I apologize for that, I have not supported you guys. But I'm serving. And it's our children and our grandchildren's future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, John, do we have anyone online?
No raised hands.
Ms. Gilmore, if you'd like to address us, please.
Hi, you guys, how great to see your faces for real. Um, I have a quick question first on order. I have a statement that I would like to read from a neighbor of mine who has had Parkinson's disease for fifteen years, is not able physically to come here without a lot of problem to make a statement, may I read it? And still have my time at the end of the meeting for public comments?
At the end, you can make public comments, but this time you have five minutes to conclude.
Can I do?
This will be your statement on her behalf, but we'll classify.
Yes, yes. Okay, all right, all right. This individual is hampered, obviously, physically by disability. Not only to vote, but has mental issues about people staring at him. The whole thing that goes along with looking at somebody who's different. Arm yourself with facts, per the Washington Post, about point zero zero two five percent of mail-in votes are fraudulent. That being two point five votes per every thousand. How many votes were cast in the last election? If you do the math and extrapolate that fraud rate for the number of votes cast in the election, that means maybe five to ten on average were fraudulent. And are we saying that we don't have faith in elected officials to catch those bad ballots with the checks and balances in place? And how much more participation do we have, i.e., how much more effective representation we have when you allow mail-in voting, shut-ins, the disabled, people that can't get off work to go to the polls in person, et cetera? All have a chance to have their voices heard when mail ballots are allowed. And might I remind everybody here in this room and who is listening to me on Zoom, hopefully, that voting is not only a privilege, it is a right. Thank you.
Anyone else see? All right. We do have.
Hi. I do want to thank you guys for what you do, I live in Harrisville, which is right next door, and I shop here a lot, oh, I'm sorry, my name's Hattie Hosh. So I keep hearing a lot about thinking it can't happen here, it's not going to happen here, it won't happen here. I mean, nineteen sixty-two, actually, I don't know what religion you are, but President Benson actually gave a talk, it cannot happen here, and I would, it was a conference talk, actually, I would, have you guys all read it? But he said, it is difficult for Americans to understand the danger to our liberty. It is generally outside the range of our experience, but we are today in an age of peril. And he says, never before in the history of our country has there been a greater need for all of our people to take time to discover what is happening in the world. This was in nineteen sixty-two. And if you look at the way the world is today, it's even worse than it was in sixty-two. Everyday decisions are being made affecting the lives of millions of human beings. Now, as to the lady who spoke for disabled people, I have a disabled brother, and I had a disabled husband. And even when he was disabled, he still made it to the polls. At the time that we went to the polls and voted, people that worked were still able to get off of work and vote because it was an important thing, now it's just made just, oh, let's vote, and I will tell you, for the gentleman that talked about election integrity, I was part of the Election Integrity Project, and I can tell you, we found fraud in Weaver County. Now, I can't go any further than that because I signed something, but I will tell you, we did find fraud in Weaver County. And one more thing, because we're not here to take away from your jobs, we realize how important and what a responsibility you guys have. But I just want to kind of touch on something that we have been trying to educate all of our elected officials on, and I don't know if you guys have heard of it, but it's the doctrine of a lesser magistrate. And this takes place back in thirty-nine, actually, there was a general or an emperor who was, he was over the empire of Palestine and Syria. And Caligula was the Roman emperor. And he gave orders to put a statue in the temple in this one city. And the people went and stood up and said, no, we don't want the temple, it goes, we don't want the statue. It goes against what our standards are and what our values are. Caligula stood up to the Roman emperor and said, no, this is not right. We're going to stand for the people, not for what you want to push down on the people that I'm over. Petronius, I believe, was the emperor. Or Caligula was emperor, Petronius was the governor. Caligula ordered for Petronius, has had to be cut off, but before it could be cut off, Petronius had been, his life had been taken, he had been assassinated, so the orders to take out Petronius. From Caligula to Petronius, I get mixed up. Petronius ended up living because the orders never made it there ahead of, it got there that he had been assassinated before the orders for him to be had he got there. So he lived his life, but he stood for the people. And I believe that that is all what Reed is asking, is for you guys to stand for the people. You don't need, when it comes down to it, you guys took a note to follow the constitution. Our forefathers gave their lives for our liberty and our freedom. Our liberty and our freedoms actually come from a higher power, which is our heavenly Father. And our forefathers knew this, and that's what overall we're asking you to do, that's all that has been asked, is to protect that liberty and that right to vote, it is a right, and it is a privilege to vote. And that's all we're asking, and that is all that's being asked, is for you to stand as Petronius did in the doctrine of the magistrate, and I have, if you guys want, anybody wants one, you guys can have one of these books and read it and find out, actually. Anyway, I want to thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Hosh.
Just over in North Ogden. Being part of former military and sluting the flag and understanding what's behind that, the sacrifice that everybody has to all those fifty stars and stripes, thirteen stripes, the overall background of it, while I concur with the overall sentiment that, yes, in elections are truly important and security is the utmost, I've been in many states with military, obviously, having the ballot, mail-in ballot, because being deployed, whatever, that was part of the responsibilities to do the mail-in ballots. As I've been in different places, machines, not machines, handwritten thumbprints, all these other things, there's always possibilities for fraud. And I don't think you're going to fix that, even grassroots, you're still going to miss something. I guess the point is that, if you go back to Mr. Hatch's presentation, I was here a month ago, I thought that was spectacular, so if people want to review that, look at that again, but that, to me, was the thing that it's Weaver County, it's not North Ogden, they don't drive it, so that's one of the biggest things, they have certifications, they have all these things. If there's certain possibilities, I've done all the research on the background of integrity to know that there's certain things that you cannot change. And you have to live with that, you have to live with a certain, in anything, there's a certain amount of, that's why you use three sigma values on most any data that you collect, is that there's always a bell curve, and so you have to understand that, you take the best, the best system that you can, most efficient, and you go with that, but there's certain things that, sure, we could do this across the nation, that would be awesome, it would take years to implement, but to be honest, I think the system we have now works, it has been working.
Hello, Christina Watson, and I am a North Ogden resident. I did not anticipate this conversation today, so I'm just gonna change the tone for just a moment and talk about something different. I saw on the agenda that you're talking about the budget today, and I just wanted to, rather than today coming up and saying ways that I would do the budget different, I would just wanted to say thank you because budget work is a very long process, and it's hard to agree, I'll tell you, even between me and my husband and our family finances. And so I know there's been a lot of time and effort put into the budget, and I just really was impressed by the spreadsheet that was put out. It was so long and detailed, I'm sure that was a lot of work and a lot of time that had gone in, it's very organized, easy to understand and follow. I was also wanting to say thank you to the Citizen Committee, Budget Committee. I believe that's a new thing, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm so glad that this committee was here. It's great for everyone to have accountability, and nothing against anyone, we all need accountability, so I was just grateful that, that they really broke down every last thing and asked every last question, and I'm grateful that, that they put the time and service into that. And I just wanted to also say thank you to all that goes into the city spending. Just in the last rainstorm, a few weeks ago, we had a stop sign by our house fall down, and it's a neighborhood, so it's not like there's going to be a huge emergency, but it was within hours, I want to say, that we had a new stop sign up, and I saw that on the budget, that there was every last detail, even down to graffiti removal, I was on the budget. So I'm grateful to all that goes into the snow plowing, you know, the recreation events, events from the city safety, there's so much that's covered there, and I'm just grateful today, so just wanted to tell you that, thanks.
I'm Ashdown, I live in North Ogden. I appreciate the passion of this group. I think if there's some concern, some of them, about voting, they need to be going to their own cities and not ours. As I understand it, the cost, whether we go back to paper balloting for our city or go forward with the way we've been doing it, is very similar, very much the same. That was something that was discussed in our budget committee meetings. I personally like the mail-in ballot, I understand that there's fraud on the machines and stuff. But if you go and look into your history, there is a lot of fraud on paper balloting. People went into nursing homes, they promised the people a ride for the day, they promised them an ice cream treat, whatever it was they wanted, took them to a ballot place and asked them to vote the way they wanted them to vote. They went into poor parts of city where people did not have transportation, and they gave those people money and transported them to the voting ballots places if they would vote the way these people driving them wanted them to vote. So I, I agree, I don't think you're going to get out of complete fraud in any kind of voter situation that we have. I don't understand computers, I don't work with them well, but I think they are the future, and I don't think we can go backwards fifty years because there might be a problem, because there was a problem in the mouth, so, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else, John, do we have anyone online?
Nope.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments. Now, what's a great thing about our country is everyone has a right to express their opinion. The important thing is, is to see passion for what we believe in. And you can see from the council's standpoint, difficulties they have, right? I've always said, Mr. Reagan said, last slide is fifty point one percent. And so you can see that people have their opinions and they're split. And I just want to say I have faith in our council, that they are doing the right thing for our citizens. It's not an easy goal, sometimes. But thank you so much for sharing your comments this evening and perspective on things. And with that, we will move on to item number six on our agenda. We passed the Division of Wildlife Resources based upon some requests by citizens to address our deer population. You're, is that going to be online, John? Here we are. Go up and introduce yourself. Assuming you work with Ben?
Yeah, he's my supervisor, too. So I'm Randall McBride with the Division of Wildlife Resources. I'm a biologist here that does nuisance and deprivation for the northern regions, which cover seven counties, from some county all the way north, so. I'll just talk a little bit about the urban deer program. It was started multiple years ago as a way to allow cities to deal with issues with urban deer. So it started out as kind of a test where the division was working hand in hand with, like, Bountiful City to relocate urban deer and try to determine what the cost of that would be and how that would go, and then it kind of turned into a relocation plus a lethal component of that. So the division worked with Bountiful for several years with study of this, decided that, you know, relocating is pretty expensive, it's about two thousand dollars a year, so that was the burden that the city would have to carry part of that, and cities just couldn't afford to do that, that's something they want to pay for. And then with CWE moving across the state, which is very susceptible to deer populations, the division didn't want to move that disease to other areas throughout the state to affect the deer population, because it can affect it pretty drastically. Relocation's kind of been stopped when it comes to all urban deer stuff, so it's just now a lethal program, so only lethal removal is allowed for urban deer stuff. The things to be able to get into the urban deer program are, you know, they have to have a million dollar liability insurance, you have to pass enough feeding ordinance for wildlife, generally, we say deer, elk, moose, and turkeys would be a good one, too. And then just assuming a full responsibility, which is costs associated, designing, establishing, implementing, and operating your urban deer program, so. We are here to help each one with that for the management plan and things like that, and just help you come up with trap designs or however you decide to do it, like with Bountiful and Centerville, which are the only two cities in our region currently doing it, they're doing a lot with their police department, their police department's kind of doing the heavy lifting with that. With a little bit of volunteer archery, in the central region, they have a contractor that's doing all the head lifting, and I don't know how that works, that's kind of an arrangement with the contractor and what the costs are for that, so.
Hey, Randall, how do you determine if you have a deer problem?
It's really social.
Somebody asked me one time, I said, I think they were here first.
Yeah, so it's really up to social, so what we've done with some of the surveys that, when they were working with Bountiful, it turns out about fifty percent of the people prefer the deer and fifty percent of the people hate the deer, so that's kind of where it lands, so it kind of is depending on each city where they want to be on that, so.
So that fifty point one percent is hard to get, isn't it?
Yeah.
You know, when I was talking to Ben about this, he said that the biggest problem they had is, many of the people who had a deer problem in Bountiful, once they saw those deer being killed, it turned into an emotional nightmare. That people actually saw what was happening here with archery and whatever. And, you know, he said that was the biggest issue that DWR faced, is that all the pushback on killing the animals.
Yeah, and from the DWR standpoint, we get a lot of pushback from sportsmen, because we do have urban, or we do have mandatory here that come down in the winter. Usually, they're moving migratory, migrating down about October, so I was looking at the numbers for what we pick up in North Ogden for dead deer, and it's about forty on average per year. And we've kept records electronically from twenty eighteen all the way to now, it's about forty on average. And we've kept records electronically from 2018 all the way to now, it's about 40 on average. And most of those deer happen to be picked up from like October to March, so right during that winter time. And then we have that migration time, so there's like five, maybe 10 over the summer that are picked up and those. That would be the time when we consider resident deer would be here, because our migratory deer thought back to the mountain. But yes, that is an important point that I always tell cities is, you know, archery can lead to that, where you shoot a deer in one guy's yard. And it's going to end up in somebody that loves the deer and that creates a huge issue for guys in their yards, so that tends to be a problem.
So I'm sure you have statistics based upon 40 deer being picked up. And obviously particularly this year when they were forced out to heal. What would you project our deer population to be?
I couldn't say for the city, I can talk to the unit in general, I talked to biologists before coming. So you're in the Ogden unit here, which covers the upper valley and all the way down to ID4 and then part of southern cash. And the deer population before fall coming in was 9,900, our objective is 11,000 deer. Between, so cash had 60% survival through the winter. Morgan Valley had 20% survival, adult survival, so they lost a lot of deer. So we're projecting about 50% survival here, because we don't have any collars in Ogden, so we think we're about 5,000 deer in the unit right now, so.
So about half of what you would like to.
Yeah, that's what the system.
So, want to share any thoughts with us from your standpoint?
I'm just here to really support you guys, like if you want to report this, then I can help you through the process and get you there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to keep answering those. As far as whether we think you should be in or out of the program, that's not really something we can decide, that's kind of up to you guys and your social, where you feel like you need to be. Or if you feel like you're seeing a lot of deer, if you feel like there's a lot of damage going on, like beetle strikes and things like that, that's something to consider too, so.
In the kill program, is that meat utilized or is it just?
Yeah, so it's required by the program that you have to donate everything. There are exceptions, like if. Like we've worked with Bountiful, especially with CWD being prevalent in that area right now. If it looks sick, we'll come in and take it, test it, but like we don't want somebody to eat that unless we, unless they feel like it's safe, so. The, it's, it's pretty easy, like what I've set up with them is like, we have a meat donation list for the division that people sign up for. And I can send out an email to everybody like in the area of North Ogden that signed up for it and say. Hey, North Ogden's doing a lethal program, if you want to get on their meat donation list, just give them a call at this or send an email to this address or however you'd like to do it, so.
Take all the questions from the council here, but how do you determine how many to kill?
It's kind of up to the biologist, he sets the dates and the amount, it just depends, so. We ask you to try to get a general estimate of what you think the deer are and then where you want to be on your deer levels and people work with the biologist. With you guys to try to determine where that needs to be, so like with CWD, since you guys don't have it here, there would probably be a limit, but usually it's more limiting. The buck harvest rather than the doe harvest, because the doe is what drives the population, because they're having babies, right? So we want to limit the doe population, because that decreases your overall population, so.
Council, what questions do you have for Randall? So you indicated, Randall, and by the way, thank you for being here, I appreciate that so much. Did you say that if the city chose to participate, we would have to purchase a million dollar liability?
You'd have to have one, yeah.
Okay, so what were the other parameters?
The no feeding ordinance for deer specifically, but we usually ask you to include deer, moose and elk, just in case. Turkeys is something I always suggest too, because we have a lot of turkey issues and you tend to beat them and that creates a whole another issue, so. It's good to add that on. And then just assuming the, the costs associated with designing and establishing a food program, so.
So the city, just for clarification. We shouldn't, no, no citizens should be feeding the deer even in a challenging winter.
Yeah, correct, we discourage it, but it's not against state law, there's no state law preventing the feeding of wildlife, but. We discourage feeding wildlife because of threat of, threat of disease and it can cause animals to be aggressive, they can be, habituated to that area, so.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, council?
How do you deter them from getting in your yard? Do you have any tips?
I do have a suggestion, most cities don't really go for it, understandably, but our best deterrent for keeping live deer on gardens and yards is eight foot fence. So that's just relaxing those fencing regulations, which, you know, it can be quite difficult, because it's like, okay, well, where does, where do you draw the line with that? But that's what we use with all like haystack issues and stuff, it's an eight foot fence, so.
No, like tips of cayenne pepper or.
I think all deterrents are really just a waste of money, they're not.
Okay, you hear all of these, some. Old wives' tales.
I have anything that works on that. Eight foot fence or lethal removal are really the best options.
With what you said about the survival rate over this difficult winter, I mean, would it be accurate to say? It's maybe a weird time to consider it, just because the Ogden unit might have lost 50% of its population, I just, that seems. Like a strange time for us to implement anything.
Not necessarily, because we're like, we're trying to target, like in this program, it'd be to target the urban deer, so those ones that aren't going migrating up and down. So like generally, the hunts or the, the dates for that usually start August 1st and for this area, I would assume the biologist would stop in October sometime, when those deer start to come down. So then we're really targeting those animals that are always in the city. Instead of getting those migratory deer, because that's where we get a lot of pushback, is from the sportsmen. When we're taking those deer that could be harvested during the deer hunt of the city, which we do try to put more tags above cities. And then through the extended archery hunt that covers this entire area. To try to help reduce that load of the animals coming in, that we could get the, get those in hunters and to hunters instead of us or like cities removing them, so, thanks.
Questions? Can we contact you if we decide to proceed this? Can you give us an outline of what the program may, tells you have any documentation that we could look at?
Yeah, I got, I got things I can give to you guys, but yeah, it usually takes a couple of months, just kind of we'll meet together and talk about it and then. I think you have to, I think the one requirement is, once you put your plan together, just having a public meeting to. Let the citizens know this is the plan and then we'll give a C O R for it and then board with it, but.
Obviously it's archery, we don't want firearms going off in the city.
Yeah, I mean, like, so where do you find these archery folks? So it depends, like you could do, so with the program, like you allow baiting, which is not something we are allowed during regular hunts. So you could bait like park or something like that, but like. Bountiful's using a combination of trap and law enforcement officers and they're. Using like capable gun to come in and euthanize them in the trap. And then Centerville's using their officers and they work with firearms company to use something. Out of their service rifles that won't pass through, so they're actually taking them out of front yards with service rifles, so.
So could one assume this is basically Bountiful, Centerville have ongoing programs?
Yes, correct.
Solve the, it's still an ongoing.
Yeah, you're never going to depopulate all of the deer, it just, it's probably not possible, because as you have that migration, you'll pick up other urban deer that will fill that ditch that's open, so.
Thank you for your time, thank you for coming, any other questions, council member Swanson?
No, I just want to make a motion, taking official stances as a council, which we can do.
Okay. Set on the agenda for the seat.
So we didn't, we did not have it as an action item?
Don't our rules allow us to take action on anything that's on the agenda?
It does say that down here that we can take action on things, yeah.
With that, Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city officially not enter into a deer calling program.
We have a motion by Councilmember Swanson. Not to enter into a program, let's describe this evening. You have a second to that?
A second now.
Second by Councilmember Exton, do we have further discussion on this issue? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, sounds like you're off the. Program in our city, but thank you so much for coming and thanks for all you guys do in our state.
All right, thanks for letting me talk to you guys.
All right. Now we're to item number seven. We hear from our friend Jamie Jones, our finance director. She's going to lead a discussion to consider an ordinance adopted in the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. Jamie, before we enter into a public hearing, is there a comment you'd like to make?
So we did hold a public hearing on May 9th and passed a tentative budget. The microphone, yeah. At this time. There, and there was no property tax increase in the budget. Except there was approximately $40,000 in growth that was budgeted. So presented is a balanced budget. It's a balanced budget, but since our, our, our new information, sorry, you didn't want to call you out, but our. Recorder is leaving us, we had to include a full-time recorder and we. Found some other expenses to eliminate, to include a full-time recorder, so essentially the net. Is zero for the general fund to include a full-time recorder. We have. Also had to adjust a little bit of the utility funds to include. The full-time recorder and so those are minimal expenses as well, so we are taking. So what this is saying is we're taking like an additional $28 sewer stormwater color waste. So that's really the net effect is really zero. We did receive a certified property tax rate on Thursday from the county. And I'm going to give the time over to Hill to have that discussion.
Thank you, Jamie. John, can you go to this slide please, that one right there? Can you pass down the, the magic laser pointer? No, I'd like the little, the little blue one that you have right there.
Let me just hand it to you.
He requested it be passed.
So council, as we look at this graph, all of this spreadsheet that was put together for us. I want you to take a look at this, these numbers right here to begin with. John, can you zoom in on that just a little bit? It makes it a little larger. If you can't, that's fine. Okay, so those numbers right there, what does that mean? What that tells you. Is that with home valuations, not the new homes that appeared last year and are, and are new on our tax rolls this year. But with existing homes, we had property tax revenue of $2,329,093. If our property tax rate stayed the same. Right, the, what is it, Jamie, the. The certified rate, what was that rate again from last year? 1130. If that, if we maintained that rate, our, those same homes would produce $2,282,045. $282,045. Which would be a reduction in property tax collection of $46,672. So what the county does is it comes in and it says, because the state law is that. If you have 100 homes that produce $1,000 in revenue. The next year, the property tax rate is adjusted upwards, or generally speaking, 90, 99 times out of 100 downwards. As home values go up, so that those 100 homes still produce only $1,000 in revenue. So what you will see is, because there is a loss by reduction in revenue, because home, home prices have come down. The county has increased our property tax rate, our certified rate by 2.92%. The new rate would be .001163. Instead of 1130 and that would yield. From those homes, $2,329,093, the same as we had in 2022, so even though the rate is going up. You will see that the numbers are the same. New growth, new homes that have been added to the tax rolls will be adding $98,838. In tax revenue this year, so a proposed from the county total of $2,427,535. Now, John, can you scroll back a little bit? Thank you. Scroll down for me, please. Oh, no, sorry.
Sorry, the presentation just shut itself off, so.
It knows how much fun talking about taxes is.
Anyone who's getting that, Councilmember Swanson may ask Jamie a question, just. What was the number you budgeted in the, like it was passed in May?
It was 2.377.
2.377.
So if you look down here at the bottom. You'll see that with the rate increase, it looks like there's a $9 increase per household per year. It's a little bit deceiving, because what that $9 per household represents. Is the increase from the $2,282,000 back up to the current level of $2,329,000. What the county's telling us with that $9 is that if we kept this, the, the current rate. And gave up the $46,000, house, each household would see about a $9 a year draw. Okay, when they increase that rate back up to the 1163. That raises it back up the $9, so that we're at the same property tax collection that we had. This year that we can, we would have that same amount next year. So the question for, does everybody understand that? Any questions?
Just to clarify, so basically, that's just keeping, all things being equal, you pay the same taxes, really not the $9?
That's correct.
It's just paying the same tax you paid last year.
That's correct. So, any, any, any questions, council?
Remind us what's the amount that, just remind us what's the amount that would require truth and taxation?
Anything, any tax rate above this 1163. So if we were to do 1164. We would have to have a truth and taxation hearing, okay?
It, it actually, also, if we were to maintain the rate and go below the 1163, we would have to hold.
Just about to say that. If, if we were to say, we're going to. Not take the, we're going to take the cut and go and stay at 1130. We would still have to have a truth and taxation hearing. It's interesting to know, just, just one of those little pull of the four sides, that the county can come in and raise our tax rates without a truth and taxation hearing. But we can't lower it without a, with, without adding a truth and taxation hearing, just one of those five. So with that, council, we have a balanced budget that's been presented. Which I think is a good budget. Jamie has done yeoman's work in getting this together to get it to balance. Finding every nickel and dime in every hidden corner. You've done just an amazing job to. Get us to the point where we are today with a balanced budget ready to be presented and voted on. Now, the question that we have, council, that we've talked about in years past, we've never really taken an action on it. Is, we, we have, you'll notice that there is no inflationary adjustment going on here. Right, the cost of providing the services that we provide that the city continues to escalate. Regardless of what happens with property values, they go down, the cost of providing services continues to go up. If they go up, the cost of providing services continues to go up. We have talked about in the past of having an annual truth and taxation where we have a minor. And by minor, I mean 2, 2 and 1/2, maybe 3% annual property tax increase. To try and balance out the inflationary costs that hit the city every year. Doesn't matter, I mean, we, we eliminated a number of positions this year. We balanced the budget this year, adding, when you consider that. We were able to balance the budget this year and we took on an additional $600,000 a year in bond payment. Pretty spectacular that we were able to do that. The question being, if. Do we want to have a small 2, 2 and 1/2, 3%? truth and taxation increase on an annual basis to account for the inflationary costs that the city faces on an annual basis? The reason I asked Jamie to put two, two now, three and four percent on there is if we take a ten-year rolling average of the Consumer Price Index, in the last two years, the Consumer Price Index inflationary value was eight percent. Huge, right? We've all felt it, we've all, it's hit all of our budgets. However, if we take a ten-year rolling average, it's one point nine-ish percent, right about that two percent mark. That's generally speaking, what the average annual inflation is, right around that two percent. Some years are below that, we have odd years that are significantly above that. But if you take that rolling ten-year, we're right around the two percent. If we adopt the policy of taking a two, two and a half percent increase each year, we will avoid the, what every city ends up having to go through on an eight-to-fifteen-year, um, cycle, and that is a twenty-to-thirty percent increase. We had a twenty-three percent increase last year, because there had been no increase in our property tax rate, our property tax collection in over twenty-five years. So the inflation that occurs every year had not been accounted for. And, and by the way, this was a recommendation that came out of our Citizens Budget Committee as well. They also, uh, took a liking to the, I didn't present it, they came up with it on their own, I was just there listening. The idea is that we have an annual small increase. So if you look down here, if we took the, the additional two percent on a five hundred thousand dollar home that has a two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar taxable value, two percent would equal six dollars and forty cents a year. Okay? So that's a little over fifty cents, fifty cents, fifty-two cents or so, uh, something like that per month. If we do that year after year, and we sit at two percent, in the years where inflation is at point nine-one, one and a quarter percent, we're going to be building a buffer, so that in those years when there is eight percent, and we know they're going to come again, we're staring at all the indicators of a recession and, and other things from an economic downturn. We avoid the less frequent but larger and more painful increases. You know, the twenty-twenty-five, uh, that you saw Harrisville last year hadn't had a tax increase in forty-plus years. And last year, to try to make things work, to cover the cost of inflation, they were looking at a hundred and sixty-seven percent increase in their property taxes to try to catch up for years and years and years of not doing anything. So my proposal would be that we look at a two, a two and a half percent truth and taxation that would raise a, a minor amount of money. It's a minor hit to individual homes on an annual basis, and that will help pad us against inflationary costs moving forward and large increases every, you know, seven to ten, maybe fifteen years, depending on how the economy goes. Thoughts, questions, comments?
Sure, so, um, just make sure I understand, if we did a two percent every year for the next, for the foreseeable future, what you're kind of proposing is we're kind of, we're kind of shoring up a fund that allows us to not take a big hit when the six, seven, eight, nine percent years of CPI come at us. Is that a pretty accurate assessment?
Yes.
Thanks.
I think Jamie, I'll check in if you want to, yes. Well, the budget that was submitted, as Councilmember Swanson stated, does not include a property tax increase. Um, I think one thing that we have learned is there's a lot of commitments that are out there that we have to meet. Now, Jamie would probably tell us that to increase property taxes, you have to have an identifiable reason to do so. You just can't increase taxes to increase taxes. As I look at this, my recommendation would be if the council decides to proceed with this, and as I said, I think there's some merit to this discussion, because it's painful to have to take, not only for the citizens, it's painful for council to have to take a twenty percent, uh, increase. I, I think we can identify a need for this. We have a, a park sitting up here. Uh, it's committed to be done, that we know is a big bill. I think there's other things we can identify. Like Jamie is, is identifying projects out for five years in our capital projects fund. So if the council decides to proceed with this, I would ask that a condition be placed upon that, that that money is not spent until it's identified, that in essence what that does, it builds our reserve for the projects we know we're facing down the road, because it is very easy to see money in the pot and find a way to spend it. And so I would ask if, if the council decides to proceed with this, that it's based upon the fact that what that does is builds our, um, general fund balance with identified items, and it's not used specifically for operations, unless specifically identified. Uh, I also, at one point in time, talked about what we do with this growth number. As you can see, ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars in growth. That's taxes paid by new residents, uh, city. As new residents come into our city, that's what causes us to have to look hard at soft infrastructure, as you personally talk about it. So I would propose that the new growth also be used to fund public safety, growth as, as needed, and that we, we reserve that in our general fund. Now, this year, I think we already have forty thousand in the budget. So I would just propose that the additional fifty-eight thousand, uh, go into fund balance, so that we discipline ourselves on that, that money, so. But it is a lot easier, even though nobody likes to pay anymore in taxes, it's sure a heck of a lot easier than paying twenty percent. But as we know, just about every tax entity will be increasing taxes. This year, some to the tune of ten, twelve, fifteen percent, some of the entities that we see in our taxes.
And the city's at thirty-two percent this year.
Well, the sewer district gives substantial, I think a double-digit increase if I recall. So just wanted to throw that out for the council's consideration, if they decide to pursue that matter. The way I look at this in dollars, uh, and you can see it here, I'm saying every percent's about twenty-one thousand dollars. I think our assessed value in the city was two point one billion odd. So every one percent is about twenty-one thousand dollars, just to, with that perspective, so. Just wanted to make that comment. Others, um, counsel, Embers Swanson's question?
I agree with you completely, Mayor. One of the, one of the, uh, comments that I've made to Jamie and to John is I, I thought about this over the last couple of weeks, is that I think part of the consideration we should have with our general fund reserve is that we, and if we can legally, always have to be legal, that we, we split the identity of that reserve that we have, basically, we have now twenty-ish percent that we understand is our rainy day emergency fund. And that this additional that we collect each year in the inflationary that will put us up on above that twenty percent that has those identified projects tied to it, if we do that legally.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think we've already basically identified that, that all property tax increase has to be used for public safety. So you're pretty much, and I think we've, to your point, we've already segmented our capital projects as we talked about. So I think that with that in mind, knowing that this would be spent simply as a, uh, an opportunity to, uh, fund public safety in our city. It makes, it makes sense on, uh, having that discipline.
Absolutely.
To do that, so that would be just, it's my two cents worth. Uh, and I, I would just, you know, when we balance this budget, and I want to give some kudos to the council on this, uh, balancing that budget includes building our capital projects fund, because we have identified numerous projects that the city is committed to and that we would like to see happen in our city, that, um, I think the council could prove in building that fund so that we don't all of a sudden get, uh, kind of bamboozled with, that's going to come up with a whole bunch of that. Jamie, I would ask one question on the, and I don't want to jump ahead here, but I think you touched on that. In our enterprise funds, particularly in water, I think the council was asked to be thinking about, we have identified projects that go out five years that we need. This isn't necessarily a replacement, we're doing that through depreciation, but these are projects that we need in the city to keep up with growth. And that would entail starting to build those enterprise funds, so that, uh, conversely, we don't have to go to the citizens and say, I want to increase your water by twenty bucks a year. Uh, because, you know, that is, that's a tough thing to do. So I don't want that to slide under, unless you took care of that.
Yeah, so, so we worked with, um, Public Works, and they have a due date of August first to, to, we're trying to figure out this depreciation schedule, so that we can move forward with it, with the solid plan. So we're hoping for more information to come this fall.
So we'd have to basically do a rate adjustment.
So, yeah, so there's, well, so there's a rate increase that's included in the budget that we talked about.
That's to cover operations.
And then so more information to come, hopefully, as well.
But don't, don't take that off your minds, because that's, that's something that, uh,
Right there.
Even though it's difficult, uh, someone asked me, you know, what are some of the attributes I'd be looking for in a council member? And the first thing that comes out of my mind is courage to make the tough decisions. Not the popular decision, uh, but the correct decision for the city. It's courage sometimes, so. Any other, uh, questions or comments on the, uh, council number extra, please?
Okay, I'm going to get on my soapbox a little bit. After spending, you know, the last four years, just looking at and trying to understand even the philosophical approach to how we spend money and, um, how we allocate it. I, um, I think we've kind of gotten away from being self-sufficient. Um, you know, proper, North Ogden property taxes are for North Ogden things. And so for me, you know, the, the most important North Ogden thing that we fund with tax money is the public safety department, right? We have police officers that serve in North Ogden. Um, there's a certain amount of policing that is done outside of the community. They, you know, answer calls, you know, right, just like the fire department does, where they're going to go to Pleasantview, they're going to go to Harrisville, they're going to go to surrounding areas and answer calls there. In which case, I think, yes, let's use the sales tax money from the state, which kind of everybody contributes to, and that's a community fund. Um, but as an entity, kind of, as North Ogden City, created by the state and the state constitution, the state gives us money in order to, you know, function. Um, and they've been, we've been relying more and more on what are we are bequeathed from the state. Um, there's a risk to that, I think, that I would like to hedge against. Um, the state, when the state gives us money, they also can tell us what to do with it. And, um, they like to send us mandates, and sometimes they give us more money for those mandates, but many times they do not. And so I would like to see us, you know, maybe be a little bit more aggressive than just an inflationary rate, but actually try to move us more toward a greater funding for the police and public safety from property taxes. And since we've already allocated, that's where it's going to go, that we kind of move a little bit more toward that kind of self-sufficiency a little bit, um, and away from utilizing that, those communal funds that have come from the state for public safety. Um, they're already going to be covering the public safety building, because that's where sales tax is coming from. Um, and that's what we bonded for, right? We did a sales tax bond, and so we said, okay, we're going to allocate this much. So, um, there's just these other moving parts that I would really like to see us just be a little bit more proactive in getting North Ogden, which is, you know, cue the angry mom, she wants to raise my dad, that's more. But that's, that is just a philosophical approach that I think makes sense to me, having looked at it.
Anyone else before we go to the public hearing? Councilmember Barker?
So, what I've been thinking about the last couple of days, this goes back, again, philosophical, I guess, approach. When you're setting your budget, do you start out with the ending budget and then decide what you're going to spend the money on? Or do you set your budget and then you decide what you have to have the ending budget for? And that's where, you know, tech, property tax increases is, we can make our budget work without raising taxes. And so when we go to a truth, the taxation hearing, we'll be like, oh, we want to raise money, because what do you want to raise money to save? That's what it's going to sound like. Last year, when we raised taxes, we said we raised the taxes when they didn't raise it, we had, we knew what we had, we're spending it on. I have, my concern is, if you're setting your budget and then you're deciding what you're going to spend, you'll never have enough. And if we're, having our department heads then, or set their budget early, or, you know, through the process, and then we get to the end and say, this is what we need, that's when we should be making the decisions, not, we want to be here, now how are we going to spend the money?
The issue, Mayor, I mean, the issue with that, Ryan, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Barker. Is that if, if we assume that we're going to maintain services next year as they are this year, there's going to be an inflationary cost. They're going to cost more, period. Agreed. So if we don't plan for a, a, an increase in property taxes to cover the inflationary costs that's going to be there, we have one option, and that is to reduce services year after year after year, because that's the only way you can, with the same amount of money every year, that, that is unchanging, and the cost of providing services continues to escalate, the only way you can make it balance is if you reduce services, that you provide fewer services. And so the question is, how many police officers do you want to let go? How much, how much road plowing do you not want to do? How many potholes do you not want to fill? How many, how many office staff do you want to eliminate over time, so that we can continue to have the same income every year, but the cost escalate?
You know, we, uh, good point, uh, Councilmember Barker and Councilmember Swanson. I think the interesting thing here is we, we look back, you know, the city was able to kind of do what Councilmember Barker just suggested, because inflation was near zero. It was two percent, it was the target, two percent by the Fed.
And sales tax was astronomically grown.
And so all of a sudden, you know, we get this huge spike, and our city employees, police officers, no different, we see this kind of huge spike. To Councilmember Barker's point, that's why I'm saying here that the money that's identified here is not spent on current operations, because we know, right now, we have put off Chief Quinn two or three years on a twenty-third officer, right? So that alone, that alone, when I identify the fact that this proposed increase, as Councilmember Swanson just talked about, we're not even fund a portion of a police officer. So we, we know, you know, to, to your point, Ryan, is we've got a balanced budget. Councilmember Swanson's point, we know we've got this coming. And it's not just the twenty-third officer, it's the twenty-fourth officer, right? It's the, it's that growth. So I think, you know, we, we've identified what the money could be spent for. I think the city's done a good job in accumulating, I guess I don't want to use that term, but providing funds to meet the obligations it has for capital projects. I mean, when you look at the list that we've got out there, uh, we've got some commitments we've got to meet. And so we've got these two. And so we've got these two things there, I guess, the uh. I'd ask for any further discussion, just wanted to kind of make my comment there, that you've got this push and you've got pull, you both have, you know, valid points. But yeah, the uh, it's trick or wrong, it's, it's nothing that's going to reduce our, our expenses, for sure, they're gonna be increasing.
Uh just, just for illustration purposes, uh back in the year two thousand, our property taxes were about, uh total collection was about one point two million dollars. In the year two thousand. Inflation alone, so think about the number of roads we had, the number of employees we had, the number of police officers we had. In order to have the same purchasing power, dollar value, that we had collecting one point two million dollars in the year two thousand. Today, we would have to collect two point one million dollars. Because of inflation over the last twenty-three years, to have the same purchasing power as one point two million in the year two thousand. So that's, that's less than half the police force that we have now. Probably forty percent less roads that we have now. Thirty-ish percent less employees than we have now. And our property taxation, the value that was collected in, in the year two thousand, is virtually equal to what you're paying today. With twice as many police officers. Right, we're very frugal, we're very efficient with the money that we collect from you. The reality is, you can't keep providing the same services year after year for last year's dollars, can't do it. Uh you, you end up in a year where you either have to make significant cuts. But you know, imagine, I was thinking, talking to Jamie the other day, imagine if we had another two thousand eight with property taxes. And we had a twenty to twenty-five percent drop almost overnight, and that property, sales taxes. We collect four point two, four point three million dollars a year in sales taxes. Imagine what it would do to our budget and what we would have to cut. If we lost twenty percent, twenty-five percent of our sales tax overnight because of the big recession. We've become drunk on sales tax dollars, it's been too easy for us to, to make the easy decision and not raise property taxes. And live high on sales taxes. Well, this year, we've seen a hundred and fifty, hundred, you know, a hundred and fifty-ish depending on what the next numbers are. Hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar reduction in anticipated sales tax. Comes right out of the budget, and somewhere we have to find those cuts on an already very thin budget. So we, I mean, nobody wants to raise our property taxes, nobody wants to have to pay more, but we all demand the services that they pay for. Everybody wants the services, but nobody wants to pay the increasing inflationary cost to have them. So that, that's my proposal, that we do something along those lines.
All right, any other questions before we turn to a public hearing, hear from the public? Councilmember Val, yes?
Just a, a quick comment, I just wanted to, you know, just remind everyone that we. Uh recently, lost a few employees that, in my mind, it kind of helped us get this balanced, balanced budget. And so, you know, our people are phenomenal, and they're probably asked to do more and more and more, which is, you know, okay in some situations, but. We are essentially trying to provide the same level of service with, you know, three less individuals at this time, so. Uh we kind of temporarily, in my mind, we lucked into being able to balance the budget as it is right now.
Now, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have built in replacements for numerous of those. Uh we did combine, which I think is working really well, uh Public Works and Parks supervision. And I don't think we missed a beat there, so we're always looking for ways to kind of. Do that, but I do believe we put in the store and finance position, maybe even a little bit more.
Yes.
Trying to get, so, I, I agree with what you're saying.
But there would have been some savings is what I'm saying, you know, I don't know the exact number.
Uh yeah, with, with the combination of things, but I agree with you that you can't squeeze. Uh our team, when you look at it, John, a, a three and a half percent increase in salaries, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars of benefits?
Yep.
So.
Yep.
A ballpark these days with what's going on in the market, so you can see the, the one that we have here. Uh Councilmember, is there anyone who have another comment?
Yes, um remind me, Phil, because you have a much more brilliant way of numbers than. Okay?
It's there.
It's there, it's there. What was the number that the, uh, the public committee recommended?
They didn't recommend the number?
No. I just.
Just the general idea of a, a small annual inflationary increase.
Cause I, you know, my, my mom taught me to be well-prepared for the future. For the most part, my wife and I love very, very frugally and carefully, but I, I, I wonder. If, if, what would you, I mean, if we could, if we could, if we could select a rate increase, you feel would keep us. I feel like the two, two and a half percent is, we're just like saying, this would be, this would, this would be sufficient. But if we went to four, it would give us a greater guarantee. What, what?
Right.
So from your perspective, where would be, I, I don't wanna just be edging this, I would rather be a little bit more safe.
For me, as I looked at the rolling ten years, I think we need to have some standard that we use so that each year. We're not just playing willy-nilly, right, that, that we have some idea of, of what overall inflationary effects have been, and that's why I looked at the. We could use a rolling twenty here, it's, it's out there and available, uh I mean, you can just Google, uh twenty-year CPI average, you can do a thirty-year. Ten years seem to encapsulate um. Pretty steadily um. The problem that if you run, go back into like thirty and forty years, then we start getting into the seventies and eighties. With super high inflation rates, and then you see the average really kind of go up because of those fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen percent. Inflationary years, they really skew the data. If we stay with the, if every year we look at the rolling ten-year average, um right now, the, the rolling ten-year is about one point nine percent. And that includes twenty-two, twenty-one, and twenty-two, which were eight percent each. So that really skewed, before that, if you go to, i- if you look at the ten-year rolling average up to twenty-twenty, it was like one point seven something. The ten years previous to that, so we have a couple of anomalous years at eight percent. Um this year, we're right now, we're four percent, the CPI for this year will probably come in around between four and six percent. Um but over time, that's going to drop back down, right, the Fed says they're gonna get us back down to that one, two, you know, below two percent, and hopefully they're able to do that. Without killing us in the meantime. Sorry, a little side comment there, the, um, I'm, I'm most comfortable with that two and a half percent, that's just a hair above. But as Mayor mentioned, we need to be able to identify the projects, you know, the, the police projects, the policing projects, the property tax. Um that that would be earmarked for, but I feel safest, you know, two percent is just a squeeze above, I think. The, with the rolling ten over the next couple of years, with, with elevated inflation above two percent, we're gonna get closer, maybe it surpasses two percent. As a rolling ten, um I would prefer to be at that two and a half percent, I, I, three, I think, is more than is necessary. Looking at that ten-year average, uh two and a half percent. Will account for the escalation that we're in right now and put us in a place.
Thank you. Let me say, as you know. You've, you've got inflation, you kind of lock yourself into this. Uh if you stay the rate. Let me go back to my comment just a minute ago. A three and a half percent increase, related benefits in the city is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. A two and a half percent increase gives you about fifty thousand. So as you consider locking yourself into a rate, if that's what you decide to do. Uh consider the fact that growth, you know, we've, we've had some growth this year, last year, but. So you've got inflation and you've got growth to stay ahead of that. So I would just throw that out for your thought process, that is this something you wanna lock yourself into each year, or is that something? You wanna look at and try to use that as a barometer. Uh in each and every year, so. Okay, any other comments before we go to a public, Councilmember, sorry, I just need you to clarify that, so. What Phil is proposing, we're not necessarily gonna say, okay, we're gonna do two and a half percent every year for the next ten years. Well, I think what he's saying is it's tied to the inflationary factor over the last ten years. Right, but if we make a decision to do three percent, for example, we're not locked in to doing three percent again next year and the year after, right? You're not locked in, you have to do what you need to do, but I'm just throwing that out from the standpoint that, you know. CPI doesn't necessarily represent what's, what's going on, it's a good barometer or something to take a look at as a base. You know, due to, in your, your discussions. Well, I'm just not sure that's, because as Phil would tell you, there's numerous CPI. Uh categories, but you gotta start somewhere, so, uh after we hear from the public, I guess, then I'm watching to make my. Tell them what they want.
Thank you, King.
Thank you. All right, with that. Oh, Councilmember extra.
Thank you. So, I mean, I definitely agree with the inflationary factor, but I think also, you know, as we have spoken about, we have been putting off Chief Quinn. We need a twenty-third officer, I think it's, seems reasonable and easily explainable that if we raise property taxes, we are raising it. Coming directly to it, it's gonna need to be that amount. And it's not a small amount to hire another officer with tax, you know. Saling benefits and outfitting and everything else that goes with it, so I think that can easily be explained, and I don't know what that percentage is. But I would really hope we would consider that.
Chief Quinn told us initial year with equipment, cars, etc., it's about a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh thereafter, it's probably with benefits, etc., close to a hundred. Probably less. All right, good questions. Okay, if that will open up our public hearing. Any motion to enter into a public hearing, John?
No, just to close it.
Just to close?
Yeah.
Close the conference, thank you.
I'll pull it back.
We now have a public hearing regarding our, uh, the cold budget. Our input before the council makes a final decision, so once again. If you'd like to step up to our, our podium here, state your name and, uh, give us some, some input, we'll go from there.
Doug Andrews, North Ogden. Uh Councilmember, I'm glad you kind of got to the point of, we're not locking ourselves into a number. I was gonna make that point, but you kind of made it for me, thank you, but what I would suggest, if I were. Like the Dr. Seuss book title, if I ran the circus. Wait a minute, Doug. Five minutes, four and a half minutes, okay, inside, seriously, what I would do, or what I would suggest we do is. To pick, rather than lock ourselves into it, which we know we're not gonna do, but to target something. And I like Councilmember Swanson's suggestion, that we take something rational, two, two and a half, and it, it kind of. Doesn't matter whether we pick two or two and a half or three, I mean, within reason, but that we pick something. And, and you see how it goes, and the impact per capita is pretty, pretty small, right? It's what, nine dollars or something, I mean, you spend that much on a couple gallons of gas anymore, you know? So, so you pick something, and I won't argue one way or the other. Then every year at this regularly scheduled truth and taxation hearing, you tell the citizens. Citizens, guess what, we were right on target, we don't need to change our tax rate anymore than we expected to. It's going to change by two and a half percent like we planned on, it's no surprise, everybody's not up in arms, everybody's good. Maybe next, the next year, uh. Property values, whatever, yeah, you have more income, and so you can say, okay, citizens, here we are, twenty twenty-five. Guess what, we're gonna reduce the amount of increase from two and a half percent to only two percent. Yay, good job, you know, and, and so every year becomes. Kind of like flying an airplane, the course correction, a little bit here and there, but you know your general destination, your, your, your general target. And so I like the idea. Of having something regularly scheduled, we know there's gonna be inflation. Let's plan for it, and then just adjust as we go, so that's one point I wanted to make. Not lock ourselves, but target something and adjust as we go. Second thing I would like to observe is, I hear the word services, and I hear the word projects. And John Call, I, I, I think, I hope it's, I'm not out of order in. Working question to you, but I remember early on in the budget subcommittee meetings. The suggestion was made that we look at, I think it was projects. Yeah, yeah, rather than services, I mean, we're not gonna say how many policemen to have, we're not gonna say whether we build. The, the basic services, but, but there are services and there are projects, and Councilman Swanson, I think you mentioned that. With inflation, these services cost more, okay, and yes, we need to be sensible and recognize that. You know, to put gas in the policeman's car costs four dollars a gallon, a gallon today, and it costs only three dollars a gallon last year, whatever. And so inflation happens, and we need to pay for it, we can't tell the policeman, you can't go chase after that speeding car because we can't afford to pay your gas, no. You have to pay for the things that you get, obviously. But then there are projects, whether it's improving a trailhead, or, or, or the, 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 the license speakers for the park, or. Or pickleball courts, or whatever. Projects we have. If I were, if I were being kind of engineering and scientific about this, I draw a four-square diagram of projects. And services on the one. Side, and necessary and nice on the other one. And then you, you say, where are these projects are, are they necessary, or are they nice, are these services necessary, or are they nice? And uh. So with this planned increase in taxation. I'm not sure we can, and Mayor, I, I'm going to, in a very respectful and supportive manner, disagree with the idea of. Yes, we need an identifiable reason, but we don't necessarily need to say, okay, this two percent tax is gonna go into this particular project. Because taxes don't come in targeted to specific things, they come in to go to a. Predetermined fund, and then, and then they're allocated out from there, according to, you know, established guidelines. So if there is an identifiable reason, Mr. Mayor, I would say, we have an identifiable reason, and that's called inflation. We know it happens, and that's the identifiable reason for needing this regularly scheduled, uh, tax increase, that would be my suggestion.
I'm not sure that would pass the law, Doug. But, thank you for listening. We can identify it because we're only fifty-two percent of our police budget, but I don't, okay. But yeah, you just can't increase taxes generally just to.
Just to save for inflationary reasons, so, okay, all right, I think I might have thirty seconds left.
No. Me, she's keeping time. I'm blocking you so I can have equal time.
I'm blocking you so I can have equal time.
So yeah, anyway, so thank you for considering that idea. I think it makes perfect sense. Target something, see how it goes, be reasonable, communicate to the citizens what they're doing through these regularly scheduled meetings and I think we'll all be a lot happier. Thank you very much.
Do you have other comments to say?
I'm Sandy Focken, I'm a resident of North Ogden. And as most of you know, since I've been coming here, I have been opposed to raising property taxes. Um, I like the number 2.5 though, so that's what I'm going to say tonight. How many times do I get to comment tonight?
Just say your name.
I'm a little confused. Um, when you said we have, when we need to have a truth in taxation, we need to have a reason why we want to increase the taxes. So if we give, can you answer questions right now or not? Okay, so if we give a reason that we have a project that we want to do, don't we have to use that money for that project? Instead of where we've already said, we want to use all of property taxes for, um, public safety. I'm confused with that.
Councilmember Swanson could correct me, but I think the council passed an ordinance that said all property taxes will be used to fund public safety.
Right.
So without ordinance in place, or remember we have sales tax, it's kind of a, you know, just much of where it goes is kind of the, the common part that Doug talked about.
Right.
But any, any, uh, increase in, in property tax under the current ordinance passed by council has to be used for public safety. That could be used to take the building, I believe, even though it's sales tax revenue bond. Could be used to fund officers, equipment, et cetera. But under the current ordinance, all property tax increase of projects, as I've mentioned, are things like the project we have to, uh, to do the part down Patriot Point. We're committed to do that. We have a commitment to Barker Park. We have a commitment to, to pay over here this parking lot next to the library. That comes out of basically sales tax and other revenues, but all property tax has to be used.
Right. And that's what I thought, but when you were talking about needing to have a truth in taxation, you said you had to have, you had to have a reason to have that truth in taxation. And so the reason it cannot be just that we need more money for the police. The reason has to be
It could be that, that's, that's our general thing is we are only funding the police at 52%. But if we just want to increase property taxes, uh, to say just we think there's going to be inflation. I understood Jamie, right? And John is our legal counsel, is that you have to have an identifiable reason. In fact, that's one of the things we have to do with our capital projects fund, which I won't get into. All this is accounting detail. But we cannot accumulate money in there without identifiable things that are going to be accomplished in the city. So that's, I don't know if that confuses you more or whatever, but yes. In a truth and taxation hearing, say, we're increasing property taxes because we're only funding our police with property tax at 52% and we want to get to 100%.
Right. And I understand that, but Jamie and you were talking about needing to, um, have a reason for increasing our property taxes and you talked about projects. That's, that's where I'm confused because I thought all of the property taxes went to the police, but when you were talking about having a, a reason.
So I, I'm, I probably confused you. This was in the enterprise funds when we're looking in for the five-year projects.
No.
There, there does need to be a reason. As mayor mentioned a few moments ago, our new growth from new homes this year, right? The, the, the new taxpayers. It's 98,838, right? We need 150,000 to fund the new police officer, right? Without dipping into sales tax, right? Which we don't want to do. We want property taxes to as much as possible to take care of public safety. That would be the reason this year, the identifiable reason that for two years now, our chief has asked for a 23rd officer. We haven't been able to find it in the budget reasonably. Um, with the 98,000 in new growth and a two and a half percent property tax increase, that would give us an additional 52-ish thousand. We now have the 150,000 first year monies necessary to hire that and outfit that new officer. That would be the identifiable reason.
Okay. And I understand that, but I, maybe I'm, Jamie?
So essentially what, what they're saying is if they increase property tax to help fund the police, it frees up sales tax to apply to current projects.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the connection.
But that's, that, that would not be the identifiable reason. It would be because of the
To fund, to fund the police department.
Are you guys so glad I didn't sign up to run for city council? Thank you.
Chris?
Chris Pulver, North Ogden. And just, just for the record, as a committee, just so the people understand, we did have savings quantified, general savings neutral, but the, Phil keeps touching on this costless region, was on the last page and just, just so that everyone increased transparency to citizens as property taxes may increase due to inflation. Consider a specific city council meeting to discuss property taxes. And then it also has review, police environment growth balancing both national and general responsibility. So that was what it really said. I mean, he got to just, but anyway, I guess my only, um, I agree that there has to be a plan to, going forward, you can't have zero, you can't have growth with zero funds. And so, um, but the one thing I worry about is that we're making a decision in a couple of hours, you know, as opposed to weeks or months. We went through the budget process, what, over three months at the budget committee. Never really had this overall concept brought before, so we wouldn't make comments on it for sure, but because we're not just talking property taxes, we're talking, you know, also sales tax, growing the sales tax base. Um, you mentioned five-year plan. Something like that I think would be perfect to represent or present to the citizenship of all the voters that, hey, this is what we're planning, as opposed to just this year we're doing three. I don't know what we'll do next year, you know? And oh, by the way, we, you keep, we're changing zoning here and changing, what's coming? What do we want? What is our plan? I think that's the thing that, that frustrates me the most is that I don't see anything anywhere. The economic development committee. That's what I hear from them and, and certain things are just not happening. And just talking to other people, other businesses, same thing. They wonder why things aren't being developed, why things aren't even in the plan. And so that's, that's kind of my thing is we can pick a number today, just like we picked the whole height. You know, I mean, that's the same type of thing. It's just, to me, I'd rather have a plan that you can present in front of everybody. See the two, three percent of wherever you want to pick based on CPI, I guess. At least you have a plan. I mean, right now we're just going to pick a number, so.
Chris, just to, to help you understand a little bit more, if the only decision we will be making tonight is whether or not we pass the budget.
Right.
Or we go to a truth and taxation hearing, which would be in August. And so any discussion about
We have months is what you're saying.
We, we, we would have six weeks or so that we would be presenting that plan. Um, if you remember last year, the state requires us when we say, if we say we're going to truth and taxation. State requires us tonight to put a cap on, that's the highest number. And last year, we freaked everybody out by picking 42%, right? The meaning of life, right? 42. And, and it, and we ended up coming in that, you know, almost half of that. And so tonight, the decision will be, are we going to pass the budget and not do a truth and taxation? Or are we going to truth and taxation, which could have one of several results? It could have an increase, no change or a decrease. Any one of those can happen at the end of the truth and taxation. But that would give us six, eight weeks to, to talk.
But I think something beyond just a current year plan, to have not just property taxes, but all the other three like parts of the
The economic development is difficult because we don't control what comes here.
Right. What I'm saying is that at least they have something on the books that says, you know, all the sources.
Senator Watson, North Ogden. Um, if I am understanding correctly, and you're just come at all of this from a different perspective, it sounds like if we don't opt to go to the truth and taxation, then we are telling our citizens, telling the citizens here, we don't need a 23rd officer. It's almost assumed, right? So, um, unless some kind of miracle can happen to fund that, um, I think that we could um, take the risk to say, let's go to truth and taxation, taxation, and like Phil said, I'm sorry, Councilman Swanson said, see what happens and give ourselves that option, um, the flexibility to do more research and um, to not rule out that need for a 23rd officer. Thank you.
So do you have anyone on line?
No raised hands.
Anyone else here would like to make a comment? Steve?
Merrill Sunderland, North Ogden. Um, I had a few notes here. I thought I would, uh, present directly to, uh, uh, Ms. Swanson. But I'm not going to do that because first of all, I came in late to this meeting and I have no idea what council is talking about. Except you're talking about an increase. So I'm going to voice that you, North Ogden City Council, have the decision capability to discuss, make the point of how important it is and fund, or at least vote for an increase. You have the capability to determine that there should no, be no increase and it should stay, the budget should stay the same, meaning less funding of things that you've discussed. Or number three, you have the capability of recommending voting for a decrease. Now that's a general term and we could spend a lot of time trying to determine what that means, but you have that capability. You are going for the direction of increase. It's the only real point I want to make at this meeting, except that I really, really am supportive of Chris Pulver, who is that guy? I like what he just said. Is he running? My golly, I think I'll vote for him. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope. Oh.
John Arrington, just so you know, I'm not representing this organization. I've been to the other three. Um, I just want to, Phil, let me clarify something. You say that the county says our property value is going down to a rest or whatever. That is in general, right? When I get my property tax notice, it isn't necessarily 2% less than than what it was last year.
Could be more, could be less.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, when you say that's what, I mean, I just wanted to clarify, that's not a set in thing for every resident. That's just the general guideline or how the county figures what our certified tax rate is going to be. My property value on my tax notice could actually go up and then I pay more taxes. The theory of this is that your property value goes down without a tax increase. You pay the same amount as last year. So that is a generalized, and I understand, I mean, it has to be a generalized thing. I can a little bit understand this lady's confusion about identifying increases in taxes because, I mean, you discussed ours is going to public safety. But in the midst of all that discussion, you were talking about other things. So I think the reality is, like you said, there's a possibility of putting more property tax in public safety and then we can use other severy revenues, but on the other hand, if that increase is used to hire more officers, then it really doesn't help the rest of the city. But I, like I said, I can understand the confusion because you said it all goes here, but then, well, to do it, we can do this and that and the other, so. Councilman Exum, I just have a little bit of, excuse me, issue with you saying, because I'm, I'm sure we've got the largest police force in three communities and we have this interaction agreement and we get, I guess, the state money to help fund that. But I think before we start saying we want to enforce ourselves in these other agreements and cut down the money we get from the state, that personally, I appreciate the fact that we have this community support. I know we've got the largest force, but I'm sure there are times when we do get support from the others. Anyway, I just think that those agreements, before we talk about eliminating them, we work through the police chief and find out how much support we already get because I think those interlocal agreements and law enforcement are critical. Thank you.
Yes, um, Mr. Arrington, no, no, I was not suggesting that we eliminate that. It was more, um, getting a little closer because I think 52% of more than 52% is being used for North Ogden. So I would like to get that number a little bit closer funded. But yeah, no, we're, we're definitely not saying we're not going to go help them and they're not going to come help us for sure. Yeah, no, that's, this is just, it's, it's an accounting thing for me and my brain, so.
Any other comments before I seek permission to close the public hearing?
Linda Sanchez, I know I'm not a resident, so I'll make a break, but I did want to say I saw a rare form the other day. It was a man in a blue and a tacky uniform who did not have somebody pulled over to give them a ticket. They were actually helping protect and serve, which is a very rare commodity that I've seen lately. Um, especially, you know, in Ogden City, the whole point system, quota system situation. I was very inspired that somebody took the time to help somebody else, not because he necessarily had to. Because there was other things that he probably could have been doing, but he did help and I do appreciate that. Um, and, um, thank you.
I just have to make a comment on that. You know, our police force here, you'd be amazed at what they do that you don't see as citizens. And I would say that the protection and the service that our police officers here give is incredible. And I've often said this, the citizens were pretty spoiled on the service we give. I was talking to my son earlier tonight and, uh, there was a tragedy in his community where they don't have their own police force. He beat the law enforcement there by six minutes. I would say that in our most recent incident here, officers were there 10, 15 minutes after the call and put their lives on the line. So I get pretty emotional when I talk about our police force and what they do. Always thought that us as government officials, our number one thing is to keep our citizens safe. And so I apologize for getting on my soapbox, but I'm not going to let that, that pass. Our officers do a lot of detecting and serving. In fact, uh, the statistics I see, uh, about one third, I think of the stops they make end up in the citation. If those are educational service, so thank you.
Hi, Kathleen from Harrisville, the 166% tax rate, yeah, we got it. And I was at that meeting voicing my opinion. So I just wanted to say thank you. I saw rarity on, on wanting to hold your on wanting to hold your property taxes down to where the people can afford to live in their homes, because you know, Article One, Section twenty-seven is, it gives us a, that we, it's from the Utah Constitution, gives us fundamental rights. And one of them is the right to have property and not be taxed out of it. And having a fixed income, it's really hard when you get a hundred and sixty-six percent tax rate like, wouldn't like that. And I may not be a resident of North Ogden, but when I die, I will be. So I guess and my husband already is, so I guess I can say something. My husband is a resident of, yes. So, and I will be. So. Um, and I do shop here a lot. I mean, living in Harrisville, I spent a lot of time in North Ogden. So I appreciate you're wanting to keep the property taxes low, because even if they go up a little bit, it still hits pocketbooks every time it goes up, especially for people that are on fixed income. It hurts them quite a bit. So I just want to say thank you for seeing that it stays below where people can afford it, not like what Harrisville did.
All right, I'm not seeing anyone else. So with that, I would seek a motion to close our public hearing regarding our budget decision.
I was just gonna say, you still moved.
Do you have a second to that motion? I'll second that. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none then, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So council, at this point in time, I would be looking for a discussion, uh, or a motion, actually. Certain ordinance adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, and the amendments to that budget that's been discussed in regards to a potential property tax increase. The council's desires.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Councilmember Swanson.
I'll make a motion that we, um, I'm not sure, how do I word this, John?
Can you include the twenty twenty-three dash twelve as well?
The ordinance is twenty twenty-three.
So, uh, if your, if your motion is to adopt the budget, that would just be the motion to adopt the ordinance. Uh, if your motion is to propose a truth and taxation process, um, which, as you know, doesn't necessarily result in the rate being improved. But what we'd want is a motion to enter the truth and taxation process with a maximum rate that the council could adopt, because that's what we need to pass on to the county is the maximum rate. Um, and so that, that would be the limit. So if the group tonight said it's going to be half a percent, then that's the most that would be part of truth and taxation. Just like last year, we went to forty-two percent, knowing that that probably was not the number, but you wanted the room to talk about. So.
Okay.
I'll make the motion and we enter the truth and taxation process with a rate cap of three percent.
That is, uh, would you like to refer to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve?
That's the actual budget, which I'm not motioning. Do I need to move, do I need to mess?
So that, that, no, we don't need to motion that one. Uh, the idea would be it would then be considered in August, and I'm not sure if we would change the ordinance number at that point or not. Do you?
Yeah.
We, we would give it a new number.
We would just do the twelve if you were going to lock it in. Sorry if we're confusing you.
Okay, so that's my question.
Which one?
About the one one six three.
So what's the number?
Whatever that would be.
The one one nine eight, the one one nine eight.
With a, a, a maximum rate of zero points. Let me re- amend.
Start over. Go ahead.
We're backing up. Mayor, I'm motioning that we enter the truth and taxation process with a maximum tax rate of zero point zero zero one one nine eight, which would be three percent above the certified rate from the council.
Kay, help me here, because it seems like in the back of my mind, somehow we didn't equate three percent with the rate of one point type. And we, we had a variance there. So do we want to base it on a percent or the rate? What do we, what do we have to do here? Just takes in my mind that we had, that's happened last year. Yeah, it seems like.
So the form will say, the form actually shows a rate for a budgeted revenue.
So zero point zero zero one one nine eight would be the maximum rate.
Uh, we're seeking revenue out of two million and five hundred thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars?
Correct.
Can we put in the, the greater of those too, just to protect ourselves, John?
Yep, then we can double check the math and do the greater of the two.
So the actual revenue rates are actually typing it into the, their portal, so that, them fitting out that revenue number.
Okay, well, we have confidence. It seems like something happened to us last year, as I recall.
I mean, I think Jamie's done the work ahead of time to have the tax rates here, so we should, we should get, we should have a motion then.
Uh, to enter the truth and taxation process, seeking a tax rate of point zero zero one one nine eight. Maximum rate of zero zero one one nine eight.
Okay, question first.
How about if you have a second and then we'll go to discussions, okay?
Well, we, sure, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Exstrom for seconding Councilmember Swanson's motion. Now is a discussion.
Yes, so Councilmember Swanson, yes, am I recognized?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. Sometimes I just start talking. But, um, so with that, does that get us the funds to fund that twenty-third officer?
Yes.
Okay, because that's really my biggest concern. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, uh, probably about a month ago, I sent an email to the mayor and city council about some population estimates that were in the standard. And in the standard article, there was a link to what our current estimates are. I just want to make sure we're all aware. And I, I think the most accurate census estimates are usually at that ten-year mark, because that's where they do all the extra effort to make sure that they're as close as they can get them. But, uh, in this, so refer back to that email when you get a chance. North Ogden City in twenty twenty had an estimated population of twenty-one thousand thirty-seven residents. This was on July first of that year. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, on July first, there was an estimated twenty-one thousand four hundred and ninety. And then on July first of twenty twenty-two, an estimation of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five. Uh, so I guess what I'm trying to point out is this year, I think decidedly, population growth has kind of decreased to a small extent because of the market. So I, I would estimate that our population at North Ogden, just based off of this, would be twenty-two thousand five hundred people as of July first of this year, uh, just an estimate. So I know we're getting a little bit hung up on the twenty-third officer, and I think the whole idea behind the twenty-third officer was per twenty-three thousand residents. I know this is not an exact science, but I just wanted to uh, make sure everyone knew. I, I don't estimate that we're at twenty-three thousand yet. I estimate that we'll be at twenty-three thousand by uh, July first of next of twenty twenty-four.
Which I think is a good point, Councilmember Dowpass. Chief Quinn has always said there, we're gonna hit that twenty-third. He wants to have it in place, the train is ready uh, to go. I would just point out too, um, citizens don't see this, but we've had some very interesting primary city, which I think is evidence that as our population grows, crime most likely will grow too. So we have two factors, just as a reminder, population calls, which we love.
And I, and I'm not opposed to where things are going. I just wanted to make sure we kind of have those numbers in our minds.
Kay, is there any further discussion? We have a motion. You want to discuss your motion?
Just, yeah, just one, one, one comment for Councilmember Dowpass. The national average is over two officers per, and we're under one officer.
We're not overdoing it.
I, I'm saying we are, we are not by any stretch overdoing it uh, by, by adding that twenty-third officer. As Mayor just alluded to, I think we're getting ahead of the game, which is where we want to be with policing. We want to be ahead of the curve, not behind.
Councilmember Barker, thank you. You have a comment?
Yeah, so I'm not opposed to the tax increase. I, I'm just curious, are we going to tell Chief Quinn we're funding a twenty-third officer, or is this going to go to their budget right now and then we're going to take sales tax and put it in the general fund and increase that from twenty, what is it, twenty percent?
Twenty-one percent.
To twenty-one percent, whatever that difference is. What, what is the purpose of running this money going that we are looking at the increase?
You have to, Councilmember Swanson.
I mean, it's going to the police department. The specifics we haven't hired out yet.
I just, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion, just to refresh everyone's mind, made by Councilmember Swanson to enter the truth and taxation hearing uh, with the, uh, to propose a maximum rate of point zero zero one one nine eight. I believe that motion was seconded by Councilmember Exstrom. Is there any further discussion? John, does this need a roll call vote since it's?
Yeah, since it's tax related.
Okay, let's start in our order here. We'll start with you. Councilmember Severn?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpass?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
That's a member expert.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, just as a reminder, that doesn't necessarily, it won't take place. It just gives the opportunity for citizens to come and discuss that to the taxation hearing. All right, thank you, Council for your discussion on that. I would now be looking for a motion to recess the city council meeting, being the redevelopment agency. Um, we have a motion to return committee, so, so moved by Councilmember Swanson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Exstrom. Discussion? All in favor of recessing council meeting and entering to the RDA? You can say aye.
Aye.
All right. Kay, do you want to discuss the argument? Questions or questions there?
So just for the, as the board held the public hearing on tonight, um, it passed a tentative budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four year. Um, at that time, the budget was presented with no uh, revenue increases and no, uh, proposed projects at the time. There is a transfer to the Atlantic Center from the RDA for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. No other changes have been made to the budget since the approval of the tentative project.
Question, uh, if we increase the tax rate, will we get more money in the RDA?
So we will, but we can, we still adopt the budget tonight and that just gets.
Sorry, just gets absorbed. And hopefully, we won't have to fund the product center to, to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Last year was about thirty thousand.
Thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars. So, uh, just because this budget doesn't mean we have to spend it, but it is there. All right, so, uh, any questions for Jamie? Before we enter into a public hearing, as the RDA. Okay, I see that. So I will, this point in time, open the public hearing for the redevelopment agency fiscal years, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Would you like to comment? I don't see any comments. So I'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Swanson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Exstrom. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none then, um, close the public hearing. All in favor of doing so?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no objections. Our next, uh, item of business would be our discussion of seeking, uh, a motion to adopt the ordinance, RDA twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. I think it's an action to adopt it.
Can we change it to twelve since we didn't use it? Please?
This is RDA though.
It's okay. So if you'll just change it to RDA.
We didn't use twelve before.
It's okay. It's just so, so we can keep our numbering like in a flow. So if you'll just change it to RDA twenty twenty-three, twelve, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to change that, uh, Councilmember Swanson to adopt the ordinance, RDA twenty twenty-three dash twelve?
I did not make a motion on that. I made a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm just thinking ahead. Councilmember Barker, predicting the future? There's so many motions floating around here inside of the public.
I'll make a motion to approve RDA twenty twenty-three dash twelve as presented. Second.
And the other second by Councilmember Swanson. Is there any discussion on that? Again, we need a, uh, roll call vote for the committee. So, um, we'll start with a roll call vote with committee member.
Yes.
Member Dowpass.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Barker? Yes.
Committee member Exstrom.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, remove that we adjourn the RDA meeting and reconvene a regular city council meeting.
Motion to adjourn the RDA meeting and convene to the council meeting. I also have a second to that motion by Councilmember Barker. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none then, all in favor of motion, aye?
Aye.
So we're now back in city council meeting. We'll move on to item number nine. This is an action to consider a resolution to appropriate unclaimed property for public interest use. For those of you who had a chance to look through that, it was interesting. We had a, uh, citizen request destruction of three of their firearms. They had, they had one, I'm sorry. They requested their firearms not be sold, but they'd be destroyed. If you look through the list there. So there is a list there and it talks about what will be destroyed and, uh, what will be sold, what will be kept. But Mr. Call, would you like to make comments on that?
Yes, so council, uh, several of these items are things that were found. Some of them are items that were taken as part of cases. And some of them are things that were surrendered, you know, as the mayor mentioned, the destruction of some firearms that were the family did not want around anymore. So they made that decision. But some of these items, so there's, there's, we'll destroy it, we'll donate it, meaning we'll give it away to a charity. A good example is sometimes bikes we give to charities and they fix them up and give them to people. And then sometimes we appropriate those items to the city. A good example is oftentimes tools, screwdrivers, things like that, we give to the city and we use them either in the mechanic shop where the police officers will keep them or our building inspector will get them. But the idea is before we can donate anything or convert it to a city use, uh, which would include the selling of an item at an auction and keeping the funds, we have to do a public notice and get approval from the council. Uh, the public notice, it doesn't have to happen in a specific order. So what we've done lately is we've had the council approve the resolution. And then we do our ten days of public notice. And then at the end of that timeframe, then uh, our evidence technicians are allowed to destroy, donate, or otherwise appropriate the items. So the request tonight is for council to approve the list. Um, and you don't have to make note in your motion, the appropriation of the specific items, but just acknowledging that there are some items that will be essentially sold or used for city, as a city resource um, for our needs in the police department and other areas. So.
Kay, any questions for John? So if you're seeking a motion, this is actually a resolution. Is the number right, Susan?
Yes, sir.
Resolution is O two, that's twenty twenty-three. And this would be a resolution to appropriate unclaimed property for public interest use, referencing the list John just had on the screen, this in the packet. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution, O two, that's twenty twenty-three?
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution O two dash twenty twenty three concerning the appropriate unclaimed property for public interest use.
Okay, thank you for that motion, Councilmember Extron. I second that. Second by Councilmember Severin. Are there any further questions or discussions? Before we take a roll call vote on this issue. Okay, Councilmember Severin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpas.
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
And Councilmember Extron.
Yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Item number ten on our agenda is the American recognition for a new city recorder. I'm not prepared to do that at this time. We had some very good interviews this afternoon. I appreciate Councilmember Swanson, Councilmember Barker participating with us in that. We have some excellent candidates. Playing time, we are not prepared to make a recommendation. But I would like to take this opportunity since this is probably Susan's last council meeting with us. Many of you don't know this, but in my book, Susan is one of the most qualified recorders in the state. She has she has made an effort to get numerous certifications during her employment here. She's been a strength to our city and we are surely going to miss her. Her presence here in the city. She had to spend a lot of time in our interviews today explaining what she meant by babysitting the mayor. I think we got past that. Councilmember Barker has lost some candidates because of that requirement. She's done an excellent job of keeping the right place at the right time. So we wish her great success as she moves down to the southern part of our great country. And it's going to be hard to replace her, but I think we have some. So this time I'm going to take some prerogative. If you'd like to make some comments, Susan.
Thank you for your kind words. I just appreciate the trust in me. I've chosen to work part time at a full time position and it's not been easy for probably all of us, but I've seemed to hustle it with my way through it and I appreciate the support I've gotten to still coach twelve year old girls softball as more my other time goes. So I, I just appreciate the support and the residents and everyone and just, I'm going to live my best life. I'm going to the beach. So.
I want to express appreciation for letting me left to Councilmember Swanson play on the twelve year old girls team. That was extremely admirable. I always want to go lead the team, but thanks for, now I know why I have a girl in my hair. But, but thank you so much, Susan, for all you've done for the city.
Thank you.
You will be missed. And she has agreed to kind of help us go through the next little while while we get a new recorder in place. So we'll miss you.
Thank you.
Enjoy life.
Mutual. Thank you.
Okay, so we will dispense then with item number ten. That's okay, council. All right. We'll now go on to item number one. Start by hearing from Councilmember Severin. We'll move on to Councilmember Extron and finish up with Councilmember Barker. Please don't be offended, but I've got to go talk to a guy about a horse. Yes, Councilmember Swanson.
I, I'd like to delay your getting to the horse.
Don't be delaying too long.
I'd like to add the finance report at the end that we did not give at the last council meeting because we didn't have numbers. I have that now. So after Councilmember Barker.
We'll go with that.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. So go ahead, Councilmember Severin.
So Chief Quinn wanted me to mention tonight that the entire squad was actually involved in de-escalation training today. And apparently some of the city employees also assisted with that opportunity. So we're grateful for the efforts they make to make sure that we are protected. Chief Quinn also wanted me to mention that apparently road rage is out of control over all the state. Officer Lopez is shaking his head. So he said to drive patiently and if for some reason you find yourself in a road rage incident, to call nine one one, nine one one. And then if you know someone who needs help with some mental assistance, please remember to call nine eight eight for resources, but if it becomes emergency, nine one, nine one one. So that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Councilmember Severin. Councilmember Extron.
All right. Thank you to David Espinoza giving me the public works report and he says that the springs have slowed down dramatically and let the public works department begin cleaning up up sandbags. So they've also started tearing down the Randall's tank. It's one of our older water tanks. So we're going to start building our new two million gallon tank. So these are the to speak to the concern about projects versus services. We have a project so that we can provide services. So, you know, in order to keep water flowing through the city, we have to do capital projects in order to maintain the service. So they are directly correlated. That's it for public works.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mayor.
Good to be back.
Let's go to Councilmember Barker.
All right. Make sure I'm saying the right part. Waterman Park, Plague and Equipment's been ordered for this shift. We're in the process of being shipped. It should be here within a week. Installation should be done. They should have it open. We get it fourth of July is what I've been told. And also with Waterman Park or in Park. Generally, it's a big catch basin. They are in the process of fixing the bottom of it because it's full of silk. So that, and then the Dog Park should be open within a week as well. They're going to get it voted back over.
That's good. I'm getting some inquiries down at Dog Park, so. Be good to get that open. Okay, Councilmember Swanson, would you like to report on finance?
Yes, eighty three percent of the fiscal year council has gone by. General fund revenues are at seventy seven point one percent. Remember that's because sales tax is always lagging behind where we are at in the actual fiscal year. Expenditures, however, are at seventy five point one percent. So again, eighty three percent of end of the year and expenditure is only seventy five percent. So that's again the dedication shown by our departments and being fiscally prudent as we go through the year, even on very fiscally thin and tight budgets. They always do a wonderful job. Sales tax for March, John, do you have that slide by chance? Well, never mind. Sales tax for March was four point seven seven percent higher than last year. If you remember February, we came in a little under the previous year. So it's nice to see it bounce back up a little bit, not a whole lot, but it's still in the positive direction. So we, at this point, have not felt the need to further reduce our sales tax projections for next year. We'll see what the next couple of months will be worth. The total for the year is seven point four six percent higher than budgeted. That's two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. We still have two months to collect. We're still projecting that at the end of the year, our sales tax collections will be about four point five million dollars. Utility revenues are on target at eighty three percent or more in each fund. The audit committee met last month reviewing our third quarter, our January through March. We, the committee reviewed our annual fraud risk assessment, which, for your information, a new auditors came in. They alerted us to some areas where we had opportunities to improve. Jamie has done an amazing job at getting us to where we need to be to make those improvements. We have one remaining category where we can gain possible points and it's five points that we can gain, right? And we are as, after we institute this credit card policy, we will have all of the fraud risk points that we can possibly get for a city our size. Which puts us in the very low category for fraud risk within our city with all of the controls and everything that are in place. Council will discuss credit card policy at our next meeting. We also have some final budget amendments that will be coming forward as you do at the end of every year. So be watching for those. No major surprises. Just the typical year in governmental accounting stuff that we have to do a year. And that's where we are.
Thank you for that report, Councilmember Swanson. You have any questions? Right, perfect. We'll move on then to item number twelve on our agenda, which is the public comments. This is a reminder, if you'd like to comment, please step up to the podium, state your name. If you're a resident of Northampton, please travel into comments time more than five minutes possible. Okay.
Chris Paul of Northampton, Doug Anderson. Well, that was a good comment though, he had to leave, but basically when you guys were talking about the budget and you said three percent, the three percent wasn't covering a twenty third police officer, but then seemed to be in the end that that was where you were headed. Just, I guess, when you presented in the August timeframe that you know, it's more succinct than that because it was kind of wandering and it lost me and it lost Doug. So that was probably the only people really paying attention. Anyway, so, no, and, but the, what was the other thing? Anyway, um, just, I, just an update on, I mentioned the Hollis property. There's the there's a strip of land, I think it was a development protection. Because they got developed in there. They have a line of protection. Anyway, long story short, I'm trying to work with them to, to come up with a between Walt Nielsen and them, trying to figure out a better way to, to do what they're doing. But anyways, it's a good kind of reach in and get better neighborhoodship and I think in that area because it's been constraining. But that's it. Thanks.
Chris? Do you have anyone online?
Nope.
Susan, did you want to comment? That'd be your time.
I had to set my Alexa timer here. Alexa, set timer for five minutes, please. Okay, first of all, um, thank you guys so much for your service. I appreciate you so much. And it's so great to be here in person and see you. Um, tonight I want to talk about, oh, Susan Kilborn. Loud and proud, thirty five year resident of the beautiful city of Northampton. I'm going to read some of this because I'm in the middle of a killer court case right now. So I did this by the seat of my pants here. Okay, coincidentally, my comments commence and conclude with the letter C consistently. I want to talk about code as in the Northampton City Council Code of Conduct. My concern is with order of business and conduct of city council agenda, which is section six, number two, line two. There is no continuity nor clarification as to what qualifies as appropriate content of a presentation versus a comment. The time allocation between the two is at least twice for presentation as a comment. Consensus and clarity in rule six, item two, under order of business and conduct of agenda, line two indicates that to petition to be on the city council agenda, it requires merely one council member to accept the item for presentation. To ensure any smacking of favoritism, I believe that there should be a consensus or a majority of council members on what items qualify for presentation versus a five minute comment at the end of city council. I request that the council revisit this section of the, of the code and provide more clarity. So if I come to you and say, here's what I want to talk about, does it qualify as a presentation? Or is this just a general comment? Where do I, I want to fit in in the right position and have the amount of time that I want. For instance, tonight's presentation, the way the code is written now, I could say I would like to have an agenda item as rebuttal to the rebuttal to our Weaver County Recorder's presentation from the past. There's no clarity there, so I don't know. I would just like to ask you all to consider taking a look at that and clarifying what you would like to see as an agenda versus a general comment. And that's pretty much what I have to say, except you guys rock and feel. You know, you got a little tan going there. It's making your hair look real shiny.
She's walking home.
Hang on, that twelve year old girl softball team out in center field.
I can center field now?
John? Uh, let's look into that comment, but I believe doesn't state law have some bearing? It says two people or something? It seems like statewide or something.
It doesn't because I looked into that too.
Um, there is a part that says two council members, but that's not what Northampton City says. No, I know that.
No, but I think the, the question was two, if I understood it right. Do we remain with one council member putting things on? And two, uh, what, what's a comment? I tried to make it clear tonight that I think it's no, and Mr. Miller did get on there before he starts to run for council. But I think we have to be very careful that this doesn't turn into a situation where almost a campaigning issue, so to speak. So I think we can look into that and see, you know, I'm in favor of limiting the time of presentations. And council needs to decide on some of those things. So we can take a look at that. There's some other things in the council procedures that we want to look at. So thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Mr. Call? Is there anyone else here that would like to comment this evening? Once again, I want to thank you for your attendance here and your willingness to express your opinions. And I'm grateful to the council for allowing us to, to look at diverse opinions on things. So. Okay, we'll go on to item number thirteen now, which is comments. We'll start with staff. Staff, are there any comments? John?
Uh, just one, a very exciting topic is coming to an agenda near you. Uh, we'll be discussing impact fees. So we are getting close to the end of a process where we're rewriting all the impact fees except for transportation, because that one's new enough. We didn't need to do a rewrite. And we are adding a public safety impact fee. So that'll be happening in a, in one of the next few meetings. And so just be ready for that. It'll be a vigorously discussion about how developers contribute to our existing infrastructure and future infrastructure to help lessen the burden on residents. So.
Just thanks again for allowing me to be a part of Northampton City.
Scott? Anybody out here? Any other department? Snake, Bryce, Snake's kind of hiding behind Jamie. Okay, council, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up for the first citizen else? Councilmember Severin?
Yes, I had a, I had a citizen reach out to me about the Umps attending on time the baseball games. Sponsored by the city. I guess it's Little League. So he said that it's consistently, I guess, whenever his grandson plays. It seems like the Umps are always late and then they just show down at six o'clock for the next game to begin and they're not really allocating enough time for first game to be played. So just pass that information on. And then I noticed today. And then I noticed today that Christina Watson is sponsoring for the Parks and Trails Committee. A cleanup tomorrow at Northampton Park beginning at five-thirty through six-thirty. Tomorrow will be at Northampton Park. And then this is just kind of something personal that's been on my radar the last few years and we haven't gotten this completed, but there are no signs on Mountain Road top of ten fifty that say you're not permitted to go past this spot. And where I live, I'm already seeing people heading up there and they're razors and. Yeah, no, there's, there's, they're gone. No motorized signs have gone, so. Kind of that. I'm sure like they have them up.
Those are one, didn't we install some a couple of years ago and they've all been taken down? Is that?
No, they've never been put up.
Used to be there. They used to be there.
They used to be there, but they have not been up for years.
I saw the umpire showing up at time for your games.
They must be there.
All right, any other council member, have they concerned council member Dowpass?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Susan Kilborn for her suggestion on how a presentation becomes on a city council meeting. Now, maybe we consider having a, either a majority or two council members having to approve a presentation to be made or something like that. And so I'll certainly look at some options there and see if there's something that we might be able to talk about there. I do also want to say I do appreciate Ricky Hatch's presentation that we had last month. I thought it was very comprehensive. I thought it was to the point. I thought that he showed us so many different checks and balances that are made in the election process. And it made me feel very confident that we have a secure election. And frankly, you know, it's kind of offensive to have the presentation that was made tonight. That's just my personal opinion. Are you saying that I wasn't the right person to be elected? Were you saying that fraud may have happened in Northampton? Is, was there something off where I shouldn't be in this seat? I don't think so. And that really kind of hits hard for me.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
One of my liaison, that next charity day is coming up. So I'm hoping we'll see each council member at at least one or two of the events. There's a whole bunch going on and it's going to be a fun time. And all of you, please come out and see what we got going on. It is going to be a fun time.
Do we have assignments this year?
What's that?
Do we have assignment opportunities this year?
Give you an assignment.
Like last year, I was over the the dump case. Okay. You know, I, and I think things are lined up for a really good event. And I think it's appropriate to thank the committee for their work. They have worked very diligently ground lineup, but could make things very successful. I think as we reported last week, their fundraising has been exceptional. I, I know they put a lot of work into it, so we do personally thank them on behalf of the council. Mayor has no comments this evening. So with that, I vote for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. With the exception that I, I expect all of you at my seven AM yoga class on oh, December, or excuse me, July third. For fitness in the park.